Looks like the library's ready to go.
We're ready, but where's Brenda?
You guys get her away.
There she is. We've already done the planning work.
Done.
Thank you.
I have some beer.
When do you want your papers?
Larry, you want your papers around now?
Yeah. When you put it in, the steam comes right up. So it's like you think it's full of that it is. So keep more than we can get into this.
I'll take one. Okay. Sorry. It's all right. All right. So my understanding is basically a flat budget, once again. So I don't know if you want to do any general comments or if you want to kind of go over the changes, whatever you guys want to run. We've kind of got a quick summary for Brendan on the changes.
Do you want that email? That was, you had...
Right. I mean, it is a flat budget. And I just pointed to state on the positive side, last year we only had one flood in the library.
Yes.
And it didn't happen until September. So we didn't have to close. But we didn't have to close. So we're on track, okay? And I also just did a quick scan of our programs before I came down. And we get a lot of bang out of our buck from all the money that the friends give us. We had over 65 adult programs last year, which over 1,200 people attended. We have had over 300 children's programs, and that brought in over 4,200 children and 2,900 adults. So we really, it's a very vibrant place. Also, I just wanted to point that out. Also, the Tiffany Reading Room, and it was open in June, that was the best room we'd had yet for about 100 people, you know, easily. And the article on the Jason Hudson Independent was also terrific. So I think we're going to get a lot of people coming to see that as well. So just wanted to bring that up. Our negatives are our building continues to have structural issues. We have a sagging floor in the children's area. The joists are crumbling. And so we are working on having, it's structurally secure at this point. We have a frame set up downstairs to hold the floor from collapsing. We had to work around the windows due to rot in the reading room. We replaced our emergency door. We've had skylight leaking issues. We just had the whole rooftop redone by a roofing company a couple of weeks ago. And it was great until it first ran, and then we found out we had cracks in the glass blocks. And so, but, so we have all that. Fortunately, those are also shared expenses with Burnham. So we just met with Patrick James, who is the new real estate person at Burnham. He's overseeing the transition to when Workforce Housing Group comes. And he, I felt it was a very positive meeting, to a certain degree. He is the first person that really acknowledges that there are some serious issues that need to be addressed, and he is already working with Workforce to do them. In fact, they were the ones that sent the roofers. We didn't even, we thought it was maybe put on hold. So we're very hopeful that this relationship, when it finally works out.
When's the, is your updated timing on that?
They don't have an update.
Because it was kind of, they left it here, it was kind of...
It's still up in the air. And of all the buildings in the Burnham portfolio, the library is considered in the best shape. So it's going to be one of the last. That's what I said.
That's going to be my...
That's going to be the last building that they transfer over. So no matter when it starts, he said, we're going to be the last ones. But it seems to be going well, and hopefully they're going to transition from the current prestige management to Wind Group, which is the one for workforce housing. And so it will get that much better.
So you're happy about that?
Oh, yeah. And Workforce Housing Group, it seems very approachable, and they really support affordable housing. They, you know, they're in it for the long haul. So the meetings that we've had with them so far have been very positive.
Good. That's good, because this is, to me, it's a big unknown.
Yeah. I think we're actually going to come out better on this deal. You know, usually when you have a new suitor, you're not really too sure. But I think the suitor is going to work out better. Other than that, though, it really just comes down to Brenda transferred $7,000 out of our fund balance. We have a very healthy fund balance, fortunately. And we do, we do take on $150,000 debt, some of which is going to be used for these building issues that, you know, need to be covered. So, and then there was basically a wash with the medical and the retirement.
And then they balanced out?
Yeah, they balanced out.
First time. I don't know if Brenda was in anything else that was supposed to...
Hey, those were the highlight. Those were the really significant moving parts of the budget. And I think it's good that, you know, you start to wheel off some of the fund balance that you have just going through the tough years. And they're still a healthy fund balance. I think it'll get you, get us where it really should be, and then level it out for the next three years.
Oh, where should it be?
I don't remember the whole number of top, my head...
Look at that 15%. I think I wrote it on email.
Yeah, I think you have, we're at about 18% now, which is, which is pretty... And the other thing I just wanted to point out, and I don't want to give my credit to Rosemarie and our staff, is our circulation is doing really well, despite the fact that our budget was cut $10,000 last year. We've recently, last month, we became a net lender, which is, which means we are lending out more books than we're taking in, which we're one of the smallest libraries in Westchester. So for us to actually be lending more than we bring in is huge. She's done a lot with, you know, getting ordering additional books on rental and using Overdrive Advantage, and also moving the DVDs out in the front. The circulation has just imploded, which is great, because people want to look through them. They don't want to look through those giant hiders.
We're starting from, I'm nicknaming it in my head, and I really have to formalize this more for the staff, it's using resources wisely, because I think we have a lot of tape, but we've not been, we haven't approached them in an organized way. So first off, making things more accessible to the public. And DVDs are a good example of that. Also, just, you know, a better work spark. I mean, we have three of those Chinese, those Japanese closets in a closet somewhere, and I've taken them out, put them in public, because they belong to people, people should see them. So I'm trying to make sure that people have better access to what we have to offer, and I think that's, I think that's helping. And it's ultimately, I'm going to make sure, you know, I'm working to make sure that everything we have is being used as efficiently as possible.
So are the increase, this great circulation number, is that more kids, more adult, or kind of a mixture?
It's a mixture, actually. It's a mixture. It's primarily, I will say the DVDs have been helping, but that does not necessarily help with the loans to other libraries. So I mean, our general circulation is healthier, and I think the DVDs contribute to that. Our better material selection, I think it could actually be more in the adult range just a little bit, because I think that's more of what we were sending out to other libraries. But it's actually probably, probably more, it's a good split between adult and children, actually. But the one thing is now, WLS, the system, has decided for a couple of years to not penalize the net borrowers. So basically, as a net borrower, we had to pay a fee to the library system to offset that thing, because we were using too much. So they tried for, they said for a couple of years, they're not going to charge that fee, and just see if maybe we can use the money that we would have been sending to other libraries to help, you know, sort of build our own collection, so that we wouldn't have to send things off. But it was only supposed to be a two-year project, so, or two-year experiment. So it's possible that several years down the road, they may start penalizing people again if they're net borrowers, and hopefully we will not be having to pay those fees.
What you're saying is you were paying the fees for years of being a net borrower, and now when you're a net lender, the fees have been...
Yeah, now they're three years experiment. But it is only a two-year experiment, and ultimately, we just can go back to the old model, which, you know, they could, then actually the people who are net lenders get a small amount of money back.
As a saving at the other end.
You do, actually. So, you know, if they do decide to stop using that experiment, then we'll come out, or we come out ahead anyway. So, you know, it's, but again, it's a matter of just being, you know, smarter about what we're buying.
So in other words, you're buying the things that are being demanded by the public more so than perhaps you were in the past?
That's correct. I think before we were just using the selection aids and doing what people said we should have, as opposed to what people were asking for.
The other thing that we're doing is, you know, our children's programs really are incredible, and we could even, you know, present some of them a couple of times, they're so popular. But the other thing that we're going to do is we're now looking for our librarian to start working senior outreach, and working with the senior center. So we're hoping that that will be a really strong partnership in the village, too.
I should, if I could just add, before we stop talking about children, one of the reasons I think that we've had so many more children's programs than attendance has been so much greater, is that we actually have added a part-time children's library. It used to be only a full-time library and one part-timer. Now it's a full-time and two part-timers as of this past fiscal year. So it has really made itself felt in the attendance and use of the library. So yes, hopefully the senior, the librarian who is in charge of senior outreach will help.
Tell me more about, tell me anything you can about the senior outreach.
Well, I looked at the programs that we were offering, and I don't think that we have programs that are specific to seniors' interests. We have the senior center that is walking visits away, maybe not for the seniors, but certainly for staff members. So it seems like there might be some way that we can do some sort of visit. There might be a way of bringing materials to people, either a homebound program for people who cannot collaborate at all, or possibly a modified homebound program where we can bring books to people who use the senior center, and they could leave the books there, and we would take them back, so they wouldn't have to necessarily stop at the library. Or possibly, we could make an arrangement with the senior center that when books are picked up in the little van, they might stop at the library and spend, you know, a morning there, you know, once or twice a month, if we have a special program that would attract them. So I'm looking at, those are my ideas. I don't want to get too concrete, because I want to bring somebody in who has been paying attention to, and actually substance applicants that we've had, have had experience or been working with seniors to some extent, so they have some ideas as well for coming in and using resources.
And I would also like to put out more than 14 applicants for that position, which is more than we've had for our children's.
Actually, I didn't tell you that after the, I closed the application, except subjects happening after last Wednesday, had people apply after. So we've actually had 60 people apply.
Yeah. I doubt I need to go into all this detail, but I'm curious, would such a person have some sensitivity to people with, say, limited eyesight, or hearing, or the kinds of...
Those are all parts of the things that they have.
That's the quality that you would be looking for, that kind of experience?
Absolutely. I have to say that, I mean, I'm interviewing one of our last candidates tomorrow, the people that were interviewing. I responded to five applicants to come for interviews. Four of them responded back, and I have to interview the last one tomorrow. And I have to say that there's one, so far we've had one who's tremendously promising. He's very outgoing, very easy, very approachable, very friendly, very interested, and very keen on working with all the people, so I think that's... So we'll see how tomorrow's person goes, but I'm sure we'll find something. If she's even better than he is, then that would be great.
Have you talked about this at all with the senior center, with the staff?
I haven't reached out to them. We've yet to be able to see them, but we're working on that.
Okay.
They do, and in the abstract, they know that I want to do this, it's just now a matter of us getting together and actually discovering things. I haven't been pushing it too much since we didn't have a person, so I couldn't, you know, meet with them and then, you know, follow up immediately. So I'm going to be working on, I'll be, you know, starting to cover that later this month.
So the programs that, Laura, you mentioned, the 65 adult programs and the 300 children program. The programs of those programs, the programs themselves are organized in a way by the friends, but then the staff is your staff, or how, how is that?
No, the staff organizes the programs, and the friends pay for it.
Okay. So you're daddy workaholic.
That's right. Yeah.
So you guys, you professionals, say, this is the kind of thing we need, and then the friends say, here's the money, not the staff money, but here's the money for the stuff to do these programs.
Right. And then Rosemarie reports to them and tells them what programs were put on, and, you know, how it was paid for.
The times we paid for each one. But maybe some of them are for people like, we had Fran and Claro come in and do a memoir writing workshop over the course of the summer. We had, you know, we'll have programs that we run ourselves, obviously, but there are programs that we will have, people like Tony Keen come in, or, you know, to run programs for us. So it's sort of a mix, because, you know, as great as the staff is, we are not experts on everything.
And there were, there were some programs, I happened to go to the concerts, the Sunday concerts, but those are organized through, by the trustees, or how does that work?
Yes, those are, we've had a longstanding relationship with Trish Waters, who basically curates that series for a very, very modest, starting, economical thing. And that's paid for not by the chairman, but from the trustee's own limited budget, occasional donations, fees that we receive for one reason or another. They're generous people in the community who give either episodically or regularly, directly to those small couple of funds that Brenda kindly keeps watch over.
She keeps the books for.
So there's 65 adult, 300 children programs that are basically free.
Everything is free.
Yeah, not basically, they are free. They're free public library.
I mean, but it doesn't cost the village anything either.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
About staff time. I mean, the people who are there are doing it.
Yes.
By professionals.
They have them there anyway.
That's a full utilization.
And they really, I think we have a really great staff.
We really do.
We've had, you know, we've had some changes over the last few years with retirements and such, and we've had a number of very vibrant people come in, such as Mindy Gordon, our, you know, our reference librarian, who've replaced Betsy Seigwhite, and she's just a history book. She's on the Board of the Historical Society. She's digitalizing, you know, a lot of our photographs, and very approachable and accessible for people. And Carolyn Gallagher, our children's librarian, has now been there probably five or six years.
Seven or five.
She was part-time, and then she's making it full-time, and she's just amazing with a number of programs. So very good.
That's great. This is probably at least the seventh year, maybe eighth year with really tight budgets.
Yeah.
What, what's suffering as a result of those tough budgets, if anything? I mean, other than the actual building maintenance, I guess we can do proactively, but...
You know, it would probably be nice to be able to restore some of the book budget, but other, you know, other than that, what we could do more of what we're doing, if we had, we have the three full-time staff that we have, they're online librarians. If we could have a full-time clerk, then Pam Bernstein and I would not have so much paperwork to do that had, you know, just to pay the bills, because there is a lot of paperwork that we try to pack, you know? That would be lovely, because then we could spend more time doing other things. So we, we are running a pretty good show, but it could be, it would be much better if we had more resources, absolutely.
What is a position like that, right?
A full-time clerk?
Yeah. I'm going to ask you a full-time here personally.
Well, we have part-time clerks now, that's the thing. And we have a perfect example is that we do have a part-time clerk who's, it's very difficult to divide the paying bills among multiple people, because there's too much chance for miscommunication. So we really do need someone who will have to doing it, and it's 17 hours a week. That means she's out there every day, so if I, then she's out there, and I get a call from some, you know, from the village asking about something, a call from a vendor, I can't always answer the question until she's there and I say. I mean, that's just sort of simple answer. It's just also kind of keeping, you know, just keeping track of things, because of course, you know, she comes in, and how much time does she get back into the swing of things and dealing with things? I mean, she's very organized, she does a very good job. For the limited resource that she can be for us with that, she's great. But again, that's something that could be, that would be my, I think, all the points are going to be for the book budget. I'm sorry, that would be my, that would be my...
Well, if you want to...
And then, you know, in addition, just having, being able to fund, to fund the books more, to do more with, I mean, the programming is not paid, and the audiovisual materials are not paid for at all by our operating budget, that's another thing from our friends. Again, you know, having more resources in those jobs would be nice, but we can get by, and we understand why we have to get by. But, you know, if the question is what we will be doing, we could have anything.
Yeah. That's my answer. Yeah, I'm sure we have a wish list. You, I mean, we've, over the years, we've talked about the hours of the budget, the hours the library is open, and you're happy with the way it is currently and has been for a long time. I mean, it's not open on Sundays, you know, there are times when it's open, and I mean, if you're asking for Christmas...
Well, if you're asking for Christmas, having at least more evening hours would be nice, because we have so many commuters that come by when we're closed. That would, I mean, again, this is sort of high as high. If we could be open till 5:00 every night, I think that we would certainly do very well. Sundays, I don't know if that would necessarily be, because it's funny, Saturday's...
Communities do, but, you know, Saturday, our Saturday usage is strong, but it's funny, there's plenty of times in the year where it's, I guess there's too many other things going on, and Saturday's where we'll see a dip, but during the week it tends to stay strong all around. And there are several libraries right there that are open on Sundays, so that's...
I think it's a, I think it's a, so people probably know. They used to be there. I just, you got to pay for parking usually on Sundays, and most of the use, so I think that also helps make it seem more attractive.
Great. I think all my questions are answered, and if anyone else has anything, otherwise, thank you for coming in flat again. Thank you for, like, usage is up, and, you know, like, you have all that reprogramming and a lot of positive things, and you've done a great job. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for everything. If you have any questions, we can, we know where to find them.
Yep.
Thanks a lot for your time. Goodnight as well.
Here, I just discovered a while back, you guys now have a little dot com.
Yes.
Through the, the library service, which is great. It's a great resource, more people should...
Who you guys call?
It's the dot com. It's up, like, technical training, a lot of interactive video stuff, I mean, I've seen it, I've used it for things like Photoshop tracking.
Oh.
It's good.
My granddaughter did Minecraft.
It's kind of education.
They do the schools.
Actually, it is, I think, colors and colors.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Right, that could change it.
What?
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Goodnight to you.
I need a book, John.
So just a question, is like, this wish list, do we know how big any of those items are, is that any modeling ever been done?
We haven't studied the last wish that was mentioned, whether it was even very great or not.
That would have been, like, you'd have asked with the...
That's never been a problem.
Yeah, well, we did, you and I talked at one point about adding a full-time clerk. The issue, of course, is the benefit, possible benefits. And that, and that was the, when we last discussed that plan two or three years ago, so...
It hasn't gotten any cheaper.
No, no. But that was, we did discuss it, and I didn't realize how expensive the benefits would work.
Please thank all the trustees on our behalf for the work that you all do, and all the staff. Thank you. Will?
Thank you very much.
And the fire department?
Yes.
Hi there.
I don't know, I say it's just foggy.
You call the fire chief?
What?
Call the fire chief?
No. We were just, that's not what we call it.
Foggy square.
Is everyone here at the table? You could introduce yourselves.
Sure.
Does everyone know each other at the table?
Why don't you introduce?
I'm Chris.
And me, please. So we don't have to introduce now.
Okay.
I'm Chris, he's Molly, I'm the fire chief. This is, I think, time to call, to tell the person to see chief. Who can be fire chief?
I'm Steve Maggiotti, I'm a lieutenant at the treasurer. Joe Clark, trustee, the fire chief.
Welcome, guys.
Okay. I guess, Brenda's, you guys have in front of you, we're, you know, we're coming in flat. The fire department guesses about the...
The funeral?
Yeah, I was going to say tab, but you're right.
Okay, yes, and we've been flat for a long time. But this is something I think we really should be discussing. Okay, I'm moving, I don't know how to say it, more than I think we should be, I think it'd be good for the department. By giving a state of the union on the department, I think the department is in great shape right now. I really do. I think we're running, whereas law training, as any paid department in the area are better than, I'd say, every department.
Most departments are not as strong as we are in surrounding villages.
No.
Or is it law training?
Yeah. Training's been, even piling on, progress. We used to have another Tuesday now, it seems like every Tuesday, it's kind of training going on, and on weekends, and I'm going to courses, and even with the increase, the chuffing we did last year was the increase on the training side, we took, we shuffled more money around, so we shot that part of the budget till we get, but like, wow, when you see, yes, you'd be, I always want to go back to having a bigger one, but you call it special dinner.
You'd rather have extra training.
Okay, that's what we did, ladies. We're here to take your questions on this. First of all, I don't really understand these numbers. Okay?
What do you back up?
Well, tell me, take a step back, um, so the volunteers, 25 years ago, almost...
And, yeah, we had to join.
Okay. Had a, took advantage of a feature in New York State law that allows for essentially a pension plan to be established for volunteers. The pension and the years of service is not based on them working, or hours, or anything like that. It's based on a point system, which we don't need to go into tonight, but suffice it to say that they earn points for coming to meetings, attending training, responding to calls, and there's a whole list of items with limits on each category, so you can't just come to meetings and never go to a fire, you know, or the other way around, so. And if you earn 50 points within a year, a calendar year, you, you earn a year of service in your pension time. And you will, in the next, probably next few weeks or so, maybe a month or whatever, you'll be presented with a list of the points earned by members, and you'll be approving that list. I'm not sure what you do to evaluate it, but we do need to have you approve that, ask any questions that you might have. And then that gets sent in to the plan administrator, who then, you know, keeps records on each person as far as the number of years of service. When they reach normal retirement age, which is age 65, they will then begin to receive a monthly benefit equal to $20 times the number of years of service. So 10 years of service, they get a $200 monthly check as a pension for the rest of their life, I think, right?
Yeah.
So that, the cost of that, of those benefits is determined on an actuarial basis, and the village pays into a fund to make sure that the money's there, available to pay the benefits when those members retire, just like any other pension plan. And, and so, the, I'll let you take over after this, that what the fire chief on behalf of the members are asking is for the board to consider an increase in the monthly amount, which is from 20 to 25, I believe. We actually clustered out three different options in this sheet here. New York State law had places a maximum monthly benefit, which I believe is 30, correct? We're at 20, which I don't know if that's the minimum or not, but it doesn't matter, it's not going down. And so they're asking, I believe, for 25.
Yes.
And so the...
Let's take 30.
No, well, let's work on 25 tonight. So the, there's three columns on this spreadsheet. The current plan, as it's labeled, the first column, you know, the contribution that we would plan to make, and these aren't final numbers, but the contribution would be $8,400 at the current level of benefits. At a $25 a month level, it would be 94...
30-year, if 65 is our retirement age, isn't that...
Yeah, 85, 90. Well, people live to be 90.
It seems a little far off, doesn't it? Like you're advertising past expected lifetime?
No. We've had a lot of guys, we've had a lot of guys who are...
It's mandatory.
Consistently.
Some of our guys are 18, 20 years old.
So they live to be 105.
They could be in there 50 years before they collect.
Yeah, okay.
There is, there is a cap, right, on the amount of years or not?
I don't, I don't remember.
65, if the cap on...
Give me a year.
I think, I think that's changed. No, I think, yeah, so I think the amount has gone up.
I don't know. The plan has changed.
I don't think any of it's our plan. Not in the last... If you, 45 years, get your points every year, God bless you, you know.
And it's...
He may be right about that. Yeah, I don't know that we can analyze the entire plan, but there may be a monthly amount. Regardless of...
It seems a lot bigger than that.
That doesn't sound familiar, so in any case, that's...
We don't, we don't ask you guys to do more and more every year, but...
It has to be active. Yeah, that was all purpose. It has to be pretty active. And it's not that easy.
No. It's doable if you're active, but otherwise, it's not easy.
So yeah, we're asking the guys to do more and more, and more and more. We have more, more NFA stuff coming down, more New York State stuff coming down. We have to trade the nest now, we have to be traded now, you know, we have, it's just making it harder on us, you know. All the guys are missing it though. Not all that, most guys, we have to trade, that's why we trade, we're just going up, you know, we just get hit with more and more stuff we have to do. And obviously, we're one of the only volunteer departments around and probably be at FPA if we never react.
Except for Billy.
What?
Except for Billy. Oh, I don't know. Tell me.
Can I ask a question?
If training costs or costs associated with training, if that, if those are going up, but you're still coming in flat, where, how are you making that happen? Like, are you cutting back in other areas or...
That's a good question. I'm trying to help with it right now. Well, you just bought us a new truck, okay? So we're not spending as much money on a new truck than we're spending on repairs on an old truck.
Okay.
That's one of the things. I would say one of the things right now, which is really paying dividends to you, is our new day man. Our new day man is fixing a lot of stuff. We're not sending it out. I've been speaking loudly about this for a while now. He's almost paying for himself. We're on the stuff, the older day man, being older, being 80 something years old, you know, he could have fixed a lot of this stuff. We wouldn't do, we wouldn't take some lights down, fix some, do some plumbing work or something. We're saving a lot of money there.
Okay.
Something we can't control. We can't control the heat. We can't control power. We can't control what it costs us about. We're not running a dive team anymore. We're not doing company space anymore. We don't know which company has a team that wants to take that, but we save money that way.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it's been an evolving process and, I mean, you know, to their credit, leading with Chris being the chief, but, you know, with all the members, they're proactive in trying to address their budgets.
I'm saying it's impressive. It's almost like, almost defines logic.
I'll take more than what you give us. Remus.
Grants have helped, though.
Yes, we've worked out a lot of grants over the years.
We've got a lot of grants. Yeah. Equipoes come through grants.
Because you only have to put a wall per, how much money you get grants.
Okay, like, um...
Which is whole year's budget. Which is much more challenging than you think, because it's a very competitive set of grants typically and they're often awarded to, you know, less financially well-off districts and that's, you know...
And Anthony's been working harder now, you know, exactly.
Twenty years.
Cam hold in the career grant.
I mean, this is, I've been on board since '09. It's the first time you've asked for anything additionally. You know, so, I mean, selfishly, I think I have 10 years vested already, so I'm glad this is go retroactive, Larry, because I think I have...
You're not allowed to vote or you are because it doesn't affect you?
Yeah, you came up, see your way clear to vote.
And that having increased 25 years, I think, I think we, you know...
Yeah, that's...
The time has come, the, the cost of living has certainly...
And the budget has changed in 12 years. You know, so, I mean, those two factors to me, and you haven't asked for anything in 12 years.
And not to mention, there's been increased light on the financial benefit of having volunteers versus having a paid department. I mean, to the news...
Your board is one chief.
Right. Pretty much.
If you remember just a week ago, you was for your president in New York City, you get him.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And it's getting harder to attract and retain members. Right? I mean, not to say that I think 99.9% of the people that are volunteers are not here for this reason, but at the end of the day, it doesn't hurt and if it keeps one or two members, I think it works or gains us one or two members, so be it.
So we're talking about a $10,000 difference there.
Yeah.
And that's annually.
Yep.
So how many, just hard to get a feel for this. I know we've discussed this every year that I've been on the board and I, you know, I have a pretty good sense of how this system works, but how many retired members right now, I mean, not exactly, but in general, how many are, received this benefit and for how long? Are there like 10 people for 10 years or 50 people for 30 years or how does it break down?
How do they have it in here? But I have to look at it.
We have an actuary report.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm just trying to picture how many people at 65, you know, they've gotten this.
You know, I really think that's accurate. If I was 20, I would think it was pretty orange and I must forget half of them, but I would have...
But is it 10 or 50 or is it...
No, it's not 50. I would say something between 20 and 20.
That's what I had to guess.
Yes, I would have said like...
Right, thanks. That's a good show. That's a good thing.
Is that many, Anthony?
10.
We can listen to one.
What we'll do is we'll follow up after this because they're not necessarily making decisions tonight. The budget's not being voted on until April, but we'll follow up with the board with the actuary report. I'll give you a copy, make sure you have it.
The actuary, this, this thing is harder to get a handle on.
I would give it to human beings. It's hard to be civilized.
I know, but there's, there's a lot of data in the actuary report, but it's not just all this complicated financial...
It's vested, people...
They have actual statistics on the number of people.
You've got to be in five years before you can qualify.
You can't best until five years.
It's five years to you, Vast, so it's five years of getting points.
Yeah, five years of getting points.
And then if for a year you don't have enough points, but the next year you do, that's fine.
Just pick right up, so you have...
You weren't too sick or you went away and...
Went away to college.
You went to college.
Some guys are, 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 right now, they're not getting points.
Some guys have three kids and just can't do it for me.
There's some here.
Yeah, right, exactly.
No excuse.
Things change in your life and, you know, there's times when you can dedicate your time and there's times you can't.
The report you'll see this year is 60 members and 31 have made 50 points.
Oh, 31 people this year made 50 points.
It's great to have 31 active people.
By looking at that, you can see how it's not that easy to get the points, you know. Only 50% of the guys actually made it. It's difficult, but there's a lot of those guys who just only invested by, you know, a few points here and there.
So we have 60 volunteer fire?
Yes.
Oh, that's great. And I, I have to get in touch with you because I think I'm, I just found out the name of the trust you think it's under the fire department. I'm sorry.
We were with you a long time ago. We had your predecessor who was in a firehouse.
Characterizes, had the red pulled out from it.
So 16 volunteers. That's great. How does that compare to other villages?
Um, I don't really know. It's maybe the some smaller, you know, it's smaller than Tarrytown, but I'd say our members are throwing the train.
The size of the village too.
Yeah.
Tarrytown, how many firehouses? Five?
We have three quarters of one.
Maybe you ask a little more base. You ask that. More, it seems like the flow of, of new recruits has started up again.
Yes, we have. We've, we've, yes, they're becoming good and then, now, even the initial training, I think the first year compared to what you did, Brian, you still have 40 hours of training. You did, you did the essentials, right?
Four.
Yeah, now you, now you're another fighter one. Yeah, firefighter one, which has that survival at the end of that, so like, you're there also 20 hours, maybe that course.
And practically also doing fast.
Yeah, you have to do that.
Yeah, so there's...
We just ran the fast course in house and then we grew on pressure with that course in house every year. So it's kind of, I know we can be fast team from other towns. I'm not sure if they can be anywhere near as good as the fast team for us.
Fast team is the firefighters that are there solely to rescue firefighters as they get in trouble.
Yes, I should explain that. Plus, it's also state law. You have to have team.
So if there's a big fire, you're going to call in another town typically to be your fast team that stands by just for that. There's nothing else.
If something goes wrong, somebody's got to do that.
Somebody's got to go in and do that. Somebody's got to save the fire. You always have a whole team ready to go. Like, people get blood, not going to take, fires getting hotter, you're getting more dangerous, building destruction is working against us more now, or taking a guy who works in buildings all the time, buildings are getting more dangerous for us.
It's like a torch to cook a match, actually.
Yes.
It's something to start.
You want to talk to me to you is where you used to be like, 10 to 14,000, 40,000,000. That's where I started. About the 70, 80, 100, 100,000, you'd see you was like instantly, you know, you have...
And we trust destruction and...
Yes, so yes. And that's it. That's it. Solar panels doing now, so.
Well, that brings me, Anthony, this is something I wanted to bring up that's unrelated to...
Solar panels.
So, solar panels. I know you guys invited us to attend the solar panel training.
Yes.
I was wondering if maybe we could even do something quarterly that would be topical maybe for the beginning of our meeting, maybe a 20-minute presentation. You know, I was thinking solar panels would be a good one, kind of the considerations of, you know, their complications with firefighting with solar panels, would be one topic, maybe maybe like the first quarter or something like that. Maybe the next quarter is, you know, hybrid vehicles or gas vehicles, the complications of, you know, fighting fires with those. Yeah, something like that that's topical that, you know, kind of, some of it overseas in town, you got to consider if you're talking about, you know, building construction or changing zoning laws or all those types of things. And also they highlight some of the stuff that you guys deal with on a day-to-day basis that most people don't know about, so.
I'm hoping to get rid of those hybrid vehicles pretty soon when the guy like, uh, finally die, the guy try to get rid of it.
I, I have not committed to that yet.
We're going to park.
Have you ever died?
Maybe never died.
So I thought maybe we could do, as we always talk about having department heads come in and you guys are obviously department heads, but I thought that might be a good thing to, if you wanted to, you know, once a quarter, do it, if you guys want to do, but come in for, you know, 15 minutes to half an hour at the beginning of a, of a meeting and kind of bring up topics that we should be aware of. It can be general stuff that you, you know, about the department or it can be, you know, specific, something like, like solar panels and the complications and, you know, things to consider.
Mike's been sending a lot of his guys who are training now, so.
Sure.
Yes, and a few guys who show up next training, I didn't do solar panels, but we had a pretty good turnout down there, which proved a lot of towns. We actually had some classes going on for the exact same con ed.
We had the con ed one as well.
The con ed, we just did all terrorism, the other, last Tuesday terrorism up here after our physicals, which is another thing which is bad, David. I walk, we have to go.
Yeah, I think there are things for the general... Would be interested in knowing.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. I think, A, you know, it also would put a highlight on what everything you guys do. One other number I'll ask you guys for is the last time I went to your meeting, which I think was November, the amount of hours of training was mind-boggling. So if you guys maybe just email Larry so you can send it to the board, about the hours of training that you guys did again for, you know, a completely volunteer basis, I was very impressed by it.
Yeah, we just, we just announced for seminars, doing training there. We just did the terrorist awareness. We just did, we covered an elevator, an elevator rescue course. We started in, how, yesterday, my same guys who teach all the paid departments around here, will be on par in this course, whatever you pay department around here, including doctors, white planes, one hundred, about 12 guys with the exact same qualification they go. We tried to figure out how many others have, we came up with, I think about 25 left me? Yeah, we're getting, we're getting this high, I mean, oh yeah, you know, they're here, so. So we will be on, we'll be on par with that too, whatever you pay department, not going professional, I think we're just as good as they are.
And more and more you're seeing in private homes.
Yeah. Probably different issues.
Yeah.
Good. Anybody have some questions for these guys? And we trust destruction and.
Yes, so yes. And that's it, that's it, solar panels doing now, so.
Well.
Yeah, what are we doing?
That brings me Anthony, this is something I wanted to bring up that's unrelated.
Solar panels.
So uh, solar panels. I know you guys invited us to attend the solar panel training.
Yes.
I was wondering if maybe we could even do something quarterly that would be topical maybe for the beginning of our meeting. Maybe a twenty minute presentation. Yeah, I was thinking solar panels would be a good one. Kind of the considerations of, you know, their complications with firefighting with solar panels. What can you do on topic to maybe do maybe like the first quarter or something like that. Maybe the next quarter is um, you know, hybrid vehicles or gas vehicles. The complications of, you know, fighting fires with those. Yeah, something like that that's topical that, you know, kind of some of that overseas in town. You gotta consider if you're talking about, you know, building construction or changing zoning laws or all those types of things. Uh, and also they highlight some of the stuff that you guys deal with on a day to day basis that most people don't know about. Um, so.
I'm hoping to get rid of those hybrid vehicles pretty soon when the guy like uh, finally die, the guy try to get rid of it. Wow.
I I have not committed today yet.
Bringing it apart.
Have you never died?
May never die.
So I thought maybe we could do this. We always talk about having department heads come in and you guys are obviously department heads. Uh, but I thought that might be a good thing to, if you wanted to, you know, once a quarter do it. If you guys want to do, but come in for, you know, fifteen minutes to half an hour at the beginning of a of a meeting. And kind of bring up topics that we should be aware of. Uh, it can be general stuff that you, you know, about the department or it can be, you know, specific, something like like solar panels and the the complications and, you know, things to consider.
Mike's been sending a lot of his guys who are training out, so. Sure. Yes, and a few guys who show up next training. I didn't do solar panels, but we had a pretty good turnout down there for a lot of towns. We actually had some classes going on for the exact same con ed.
We had the con ed one as well.
The con ed, we just did all terrorism, the other last two day terrorism up here after our physicals. Which is another thing which is bad, David. I walk, we have to go.
So.
Yeah, I think there are things for the general.
Would be interested in knowing.
Yeah, that'd be good. I think A, you know, it also would put a highlight on what everything you guys do. Um, one other number I'll ask you guys for is the last time I went to your meeting, which I think was November. Um, the amount of uh, hours of training was mind boggling. So if you guys maybe just email Larry so you can send it to him. About the hours of training that you guys did again for, you know, a completely volunteer basis, I was very impressed by that.
Yeah, we just, we just announced a seminar, doing training there. We just did the terrorist awareness, we just did a, we covered an elevator um, an elevator on rest of course. We started in how I said yesterday, my same guys who teach all the pain departments around here. We'll be on par in this course, whatever you think department around here, including doctors, white planes. One hundred, about twelve guys with the exact same qualification they go. We're trying to figure out how many others have, I think about twenty five left me. Yeah, we're in the, we're just getting this five, I mean, oh yeah, no, they're here, so. So like we will be on, we'll be on par with that too, whatever you think department, not going professional, I think we're just as good as they are.
There's more, more you're seeing in private homes.
Yes.
Yes. Probably different issues.
Yeah.
Good. Uh, anybody have some questions for these guys?
Keep it up.
Right, keep recruiting.
Yeah.
They great communicator, Chris.
You're gonna actually. You will end your term and Anthony will be taking.
There's an insurrection.
Just start it though.
Yeah. How many times you been chief now?
My second, my second time.
And you're coming through the second time.
And yeah, I'll, I'll tell you right now, I'm getting out and something, I saw, I'm actually looking forward, not really looking forward to getting out, but I'll be glad when it's finally come. Being a chief, it it, you know, it really is, it's like a full, full time job. You know, like, I'm glad Anthony's gonna be taking it after me and stuff, I haven't, very, very much, just like. It's not driving around the way car who's one of you know, there's a lot to it. We have our first, our meeting is the first Tuesday of April.
Okay.
And when's your board meeting after that?
Nineteen.
That's when it happens, you will, we go right there. I thought you left or something like that, but like.
That's the Monday before, we can do it earlier than that.
Actually, you gotta keep it till the end, but we can wait the last week.
Um, just in case, I'll still circulate a copy of this, but um, to give you an idea of the size of the plan. There's currently, well, as of last, last year, forty five active members. Twenty three who have vested the minimum number of years but are terminated. Um, seventeen retired.
So they're currently seventeen receiving this.
That's pretty good.
Close to this one.
Pretty good.
What we do know is like um, people even invested, if they thought it was not so much, we've been doing a good job of trimming out dead wood. You know, we just like say.
There's still that attachment to that.
When these are showing over fire scene, I haven't been there, you ever seen like seven years. Can't put you on traffic control.
And they can collect those sixty five, sorry.
Actually, you you invested, when you're sixty five, you put it in court, you don't get your first check, you're sixty six. Wait a whole year before you get your first check? Yeah. Yes.
We can hold it for another year.
Yeah.
Is that the truth?
So are there any other things that?
Anything the fire department want to ask us? Do you guys have some kind of question you want to ask us about it? We're here.
Question.
Fire away, you can all.
Um, I get, I still get this question from some people in the.
Keep blowing it.
Which is, how many, when, when would the beginning of the no horn at night begin?
Well, what happened when I'm chief?
It's not gonna happen when I'm chief.
Okay, so you.
Okay.
Um, everybody thinks all the cell phones.
It's decided that it's gonna happen.
Those cell phones, when you go on the pageant, it could be sometimes ten minutes later. Yeah, so I'll get those, you know, down, correct.
Good, good example, the horn.
Just tell me.
I was walking off the train.
No, no, no.
Perfect example.
What's the current thinking?
I didn't have my pager.
What, what, what? I, I just have to get the current thinking on the issue of the horn, which is six times now, not, not eight and two and four, it's just six.
And it's only one round, it used to be three rounds.
Yes.
We, we could change it to nine if you like.
But it used to be like.
It was only fixed at Oakville. Yes.
Okay, so now it's just always, I think it's.
Always six.
Six, see?
Okay.
Yes.
They said the other morning was six, six, six.
Six, okay, so six.
And how many people know what that is?
Six is nine, nine.
Yeah.
Six is not.
School closed.
Yes.
That's what sixty six was, school closed.
Right. I, I know you could look it up and say eight and two is here and six is five here.
Because we used to actually blow it there.
I had thought, but obviously there is a difference of opinion here that some time ago, when this all came to the board, it was um, discussed that now the technology was available, that there would be a discontinuing of the horn at night. And maybe I'm mistaken, that we didn't decide that or you might. I thought that was.
This was not your house, correct?
So now I'm just asking.
Really?
I just need to know what happened to that to now.
We found out, I think we, we got everything I changed was gonna be the end all answer, end all answer, everything.
The technology, what did you call it? The.
It's a text message.
Okay, text messages.
It's a, I said.
Almost everyone is delayed.
What, what?
Delayed between thirty seconds and five minutes.
Yes.
Depending on what you.
Yeah, delayed, third is delayed, also sometimes we don't carry the pagers.
We had a car fire before, I was getting off the train, I happened to hear the horn, so I ran home, got in the car and went. I mean, it, you need to have it. It also alerts people on Main Street, they hear the horn, they know something's going on. So maybe you're not crossing the street with your kids right at that minute, maybe you're gonna wait till you figure out what's going on.
I know it was all brought up. I think it was not worth, it might business on near Main Street, park in my home on Morgan Park, just not worth. I'm lucky, I'm lucky to get the tone, every once in a while I'll get the tones and and those sound. So I always relied on the, on the horn and now here I realize, so my, because it can now get, I get the eye page, but.
But you get delayed though.
But I get delayed, it's your. I'll hear the horn, I'll be on my way to the firehouse before I even get, get it on my phone.
Hey, just a fire statistic, I'll throw it out, yeah, a fire doubles sides every thirty seconds.
Oh, I, I.
Yeah, so you find, you find.
All I'm trying to do is ask what happened.
Don't, you ask.
So the answer was when we thought there was the technology to overcome the need. What you're saying is there is currently no technology that meets your needs to um, allow the, the public to.
That is one hundred percent reliable.
That's, that's reliable for what you need.
Yeah.
So if Microsoft and Apple are listening right now to this and they develop something that you feel is reliable and works.
And they, they spent billions of dollars trying to do that.
It's a carrier, it's a carrier.
Right.
If they delay, yeah, well.
And it's, it's sometimes, I mean, I've got it ten minutes later.
It's a lot, you know, like. Yeah, now, now we're going preaching to the fire, you know, like um.
I, I honestly thought the eye page would be a game changer, because I thought it would come in, instantaneity, the pager tells go off, your phone will go off.
And part of that problem is, think about it, if there was a breakdown in the technology, they have to tell them. It would be a good five to ten minutes to do that for, because the police don't dispatch, it's county control. So the county, county control would have to then realize, hey, everything didn't call in service yet, what's going on? Five minutes passed, ten minutes, they should be in service and, and you know, it could be a disaster.
I think the public, you know, is fine with that. I just think that it's unfinished and unknown as to what was gonna happen and, you know, there are always a few people.
We can get this question once in a while over the firehouse and I tell these people, maybe come, come a little bit ratty about this. I go, nobody's more into convenience than we are, let's without war. Okay, you know, if you're like, you're joining the fire department, you know?
I, I don't have the number for you, but the number of calls at night is, you know, in our three hundred and twenty.
That's how many times it was twelve.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It was one a month, between ten and six in the morning. I'm sorry if people can't like something that one, you know?
Yeah.
I, I really think the public is, is accepting of this, but nobody knows, I mean, doesn't understand. I mean, most people think, oh, the technology is there. So if you are clearly, if you are all clearly saying that it isn't, then that's, then they will see it as a no.
If you rely solely on your cell phone to get the most important message in your life, are you gonna get it?
No. Never know.
Yeah.
That's the answer.
Yeah, so we have a radio signal that alerts us, a horn that alerts us and a text.
It's a redundant system and.
And half the base.
Half the base. I guess better.
We could talk about it.
All right, well, that's, you know, obviously, I mean, you guys are up there just.
Nearly as good as I thought it would be.
I mean, there would be such a good business in so many places for so many fire departments to sell something that was really good.
Yeah, I think Verizon, Sprint, AT&amp;T, they're all trying to work on this.
It takes a cellular network that slows it down, not the.
Yeah.
Enough said.
Okay, okay, any more questions? You, you have one to ask? I thought you were gonna ask a question. What girl you guys?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I sort of know the answer to it, but uh, maybe you can describe uh, what the expected schedule is for the next truck that you need to replace.
I only doubt what Anthony.
But I'm not cutting it.
No, not yet, I have the.
Three weeks from Thursday.
We got a checkbook.
It probably one seventy eight.
One seventy eight.
One seventy eight's next to us, nineteen ninety three.
And what, what is the?
Nineteen ninety three.
Nineteen ninety three.
Yeah, that was the first one I was about, but um, picking up the pieces.
Twenty years.
What was, yeah, what would you say assessment wise? Um, and if you don't know or you don't wanna say, you know, over the next few weeks, if we can get together and just kind of get, get an idea of expected timing. Because these are, you know, five, six hundred thousand dollar.
It's probably more than that.
More than that now, probably, but yeah, six, seven, whatever, but if we wait any longer.
Yeah. I'll speak, I really should be speaking for Anthony on this, um, we go, the test is pump test. The test, we just got it, we're getting it serviced right now. I would prevent a maintenance service call for right now, you know, if you guys had to peel for it. Um, then um, we're getting a couple of things done right now, like um, it's in decent shape. It really, it really, it's in decent shape, anybody want to just read that?
I think, I think it's in decent shape, we should look at our entire capital budget and see if we can prioritize what's uh, what's in there. Because we have some, we have some expenses that need to be brought up at the firehouse, it's not gonna be, be located. So, I have one of the chief's cars now, ten years old, so, and then the boat is always the.
Yeah, I told, for the capital, I know we want to talk capital, I thought, the motor, but we're, we're on the, we're on the list for a new, new boat from Coast Guard.
All right.
Kevin, I'm gonna put this on the list, I'm not sure if we're gonna get rid of that, but if we do, we still have to get the motorsport, that's forty thousand dollars right there. You know, the first, Joey, Joey looked at the first the other day and he got.
It's getting up there, I tell you.
Yeah, I've got to, we gotta think about that this summer, and that's what is my other twenty five thousand.
Yeah, probably every bit of it.
Yeah, so like, other things were, you know.
Okay. Good, we'll, we'll put that all together.
Yes. And then um, that was just on top of, we had a couple of things we had to talk about.
Yeah, no, I was just curious about the trucks and.
Even if one seven is in perfect working order now, by the time we start even talking about it and putting a group together, it's a three, four year process. So we probably should start talking about it now. That way you guys can budget for it, see where it falls in, in the, the capital budget and uh, start working on it, whether it's in my term or whoever's behind me. Um, it's probably a good idea to work on.
Good.
And I just brought up the hours real quick. Uh, in-house training alone, the training we do through our department, we did eleven hundred man hours.
That doesn't include the county.
That doesn't include any outside training, which.
Hundreds of hours.
My grant didn't come out right, but it's probably another two thousand.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, I think the day I was there, there was like one person spent three hundred and sixty hours that they were getting certificates for. You know, so you had that out, that's a lot of weeks.
Yeah, and it's like, last way it went though, it's the stuff we have to, the training we have to have, you know, or we got in the game.
But we'll provide you guys a report.
Yeah, that'd be great.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
All your members, we appreciate it, frankly, all you do.
Okay. I guess we come over for the thirty dollars.
We want to be able to treat it for years.
Okay. Thank you. How are you, how are it?
Hi guys.
How's everything?
See him, see him in April.
That's right, see more of you in April.
Sounds like Chris wants to stay.
She's going after using my son's glass. They're all grown up.
Grown up.
Oh my God.
Request for use of village property adjacent to one twenty nine Main Street.
Right.
These two handsome down.
It's cop out there.
It is. Yes, it is. Pictures.
You want to drink whiskey? It's hot after last night.
Well, I left it.
Big Mardi Gras party? Hello, Mardi Gras party. I cut it together for friends or something.
You knew you were. I don't know if you guys want to see this. We're familiar with the building, um, the project itself, I think I, I hadn't heard about it before today, so.
Just general improvements to the building that the owner wants to make and it's included would be improvements to the south facade of the building, the Main Street. Uh, entrances to the commercial spaces rebuilt, which would include rebuilding the steps uh, up to the commercial space here. As well as rebuilding the steps leading to the door to the residential units. Uh, and bringing them up to come, the stairs have been in disrepair for quite some time and they are not co-compliant. And then around the other side, uh, on the west side of the building, the improvements that as proposed would include a handicap ramp for handicap accessibility to the ground floor, the commercial spaces.
So, so right now the ground floor spaces are accessed only by the front stair that's on the south side. And to do improvements to repair that stair, you're supposed to meet accessibility codes even for an existing building, an historic building. Uh, but it doesn't have to be the main entrance, it can be a secondary entrance. So we looked at the possibility of making the front entrance accessible, but because it's about, you know, three and a half feet above grade, so well, it's not gonna happen. We actually showed Greg at DPW an option where it extended out into the right of way on the Main Street side, he really was not into it. And so we just focused on the side that has the garage, uh, which is this side, but that has this garage building. So this opening here, if you guys recognize, that was the, the way into Neil's shop and stuff. Right now, this, this has like a slope, like it was designed to drive into, it doesn't meet handicap accessibility requirements, the slope is too great, it doesn't have railings. So the area that we're proposing during work is basically playing two steps up there and a ramp along the sod and there would be a railing. And that, in order for that to happen, it has to happen in the village right of way.
As a result, it would be the shortest possible ramp to access the.
Do you have a plan for that?
Yeah.
I'm not doing that.
Yeah.
But that's supposedly here upon the public property being the, the activity.
So this is the um, this is Main Street. This is.
Dearman.
Dearman, sorry, Dearman, whatever, that's cool. And so the area that the work is being proposed is right here in front of that entrance.
Can you all see, do you want it closer?
No.
So there's two rises up for a staircase and a ramp along this side.
And where's the existing ramp now?
This whole sidewalk is sloped up, uh, you know, probably.
There's no regis to it, right?
There's no.
It's, it's. No, it's really, it, it.
Yes. No, I think it's like you just kept putting more asphalt, just sort of smoothing it out, you know?
Yes. It has a really.
Carriage entrance.
That door, you know, the building was relocated, so the building was a carriage house, it had some openings that are historic, kind of like carriage doors, but they're not at the right height for work. This one looks like it may have worked as a drive-in entrance at some point.
So what is the, to the right of that, what is that?
This is an existing basement stair.
Uh huh.
Uh, which must have been in place ever since the building was originally.
Where is the village easement along that side?
There is, this is the property line. So this stair is already in the village right of way. Right now, this stair is not part of the project, the stair is also wrecked, but it's not part of the project at the moment.
Technical term.
We're, we're trying, we're trying with this one.
The stairs on, on the south side, the front of the building are the one through the main door now.
Right now, the one through the main door is half this width and is, has one fewer riser, so it's, the rises are too steep. So that this plan, what you're seeing is it goes right to the property line. The thing that is extending beyond the property is really just the handrail projection, we talked to Greg at DPW about that, he was like, oh, I care. They're worried about the, the uh, ground below it. And then in order to make this compliant, like, you know, I think it's about shoveling and the potential for plowing, coming back in sidewalk maintenance and stuff like that. So this handle, even though it's extending in, over the uh, the um, edge, it's not touching the ground. It's one of those, I don't know if you guys know, like the handrail extension where it comes out past and just return.
So it doesn't go into the ground then?
Does it go?
It's just a U.
It's a U that comes back and it stops on the top of the stair. So to make this compliant, right now you go up and there's some new internal landing, you know, it's kind of like a condition where there's coverage is still outside, but you have the landing space for the door swings and some of this.
So the same thing with the, with the east most entrance.
This one is staying as is, that the stairs being improved and the riser heights are being more co-compliant, but there was no way with the existing stair location to, to improve it where it had a landing at the top. This is a residential use, this is a, you know, commercial use and what she wants to rent it to is, is something where the public would have access. So the, the requirement to make the thing accessible is much greater on the commercial portion of it than.
There'd be new storefront door window, you know, really open, so there's plenty of visual communication between the public and the interior of the space.
Excuse me, this is where the dollhouse store was?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
What if.
There's a lot of.
Yes.
Historic society garden is not the other side of the.
That's this side.
That's.
It's.
It changed it all? That's the common, well, the, the gardens.
Is on this side.
You did such a wonderful job designing this right here.
And that's not gonna change.
There is, there is work that, there's other work associated here, there's the windows on the ground floor are gonna be updated. That, that, I was just sort of focusing on the stuff that affected the easement.
So what do you need, from us, you need to know if we, if we can.
Ed, we went to, we showed it to Ed in the past, I think he looked at it, it was, this job was in our office, I think, two years ago even, and she pulled the plug on it. So he looked at it in the past, this didn't come up, I think when he looked at it recently before he sent us the air, he's like, wait a sec, this looks like more than what I thought it was. And he's just trying to make sure that, is it a street opening permit, is it something more than that?
Who, do we have to approve giving access to the easement like that? I mean, what's the?
You would give the easement, yeah, you have to approve.
We have to have a document.
An easement or license agreement or, or, or something, I mean.
Yeah, we did a license agreement for the, for the restaurant.
A license agreement is really the best way to do it because.
We did down west.
Yeah, an easement is permanent and, and it's probably would be permanent, but if it, the, the, the village can't give, the village can't give up public property if it might need it in the future, so by doing it by a license agreement, if they, which is unlikely.
And also, you know, this, this concrete work is, it's kind of like, it's not, in a sense, if you need to take it back, you know, take it back.
It's not, this is not a huge.
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
I'm sorry, I came in late, just explain to me what's on village property, quickly.
This existing stair to the basement has been there for a hundred years. We're not proposing any change there. The change is to have a landing that is twelve inches up, it, it's actually probably level to where the sidewalk is now. But now this sidewalk is level down here at the curb, has two steps up to that landing and then a ramp along that side.
And that's, that's on village property.
And that's on, it's all built.
And two hundred line is the side of building.
Yes. Yeah.
So how much clearance is there from the step to the curb?
Uh.
The last step.
The last step to the curb is, is about five feet.
Yeah, I thought something was more than four.
About four.
It's four, four to the handrails and projections, so five, four to the step edge.
So that's more than enough for public.
Yeah, and that's not a super busy street, you know?
Yeah.
The government itself isn't that busy, and I think on the, on the Main Street side, you said it's just really the handrail that's coming in too.
Yeah, the projection here, it's just that.
Wait till we get the, our crossing and that's gonna be a pocket of street.
It's hopping.
Hop.
This?
Yeah.
I don't think I've ever walked on the sidewalk before. Because there was cars on the sidewalk, so.
I always wondered how they parked all those cars there, I was always amazed.
The, the street has been, has been paved over the curb here. I don't know, like, I don't know how that happened, probably Neil did that with like, you know...
Middle of the night.
So, so this is a contributing building in the historic district.
It is.
Doesn't change anything that we're doing, you know, in terms of an arrangement, I guess, but it's just, obviously you're incredibly sensitive to historic buildings.
Well, she wants to make some good improvements to the building to upgrade the town's efficiency and, and, which would include the repair of that beautiful cornice that really brings a lot of historic integrity to the building. Without that cornice, the building is compromised tremendously. And that cornice is, is rotting away. We got birds and squirrels and everything.
The one in the middle was the bottom, right?
Yeah, so, this, this is the main cornice here, this is the, there's the Main Street side, and then it wraps around to the Dearman side and runs all the way down to this point, this is the original building. This building here was added to the old building, is somewhere in...
That's sort of a different look.
Yeah, I think that's, it looks a little different.
And you think it's original? Yeah.
Cornice is original. The cornice is in rough shape, and right now the project includes the cornice repair. Let's see if we can...
So, is that sealed in anything, or is it just...
It's just the wood. And it's only been painted once and never been repainted.
Wow.
Original painting.
In a hundred years?
So it'll fall down by itself if it's not... So what sort of, does this have to go through, it's more than just a building permit, right?
No, it's, it's limited to ARB and a building permit right now. Because the additional coverage that we're doing is not coverage, because it's not on our property.
The coverage does.
We also have to take a straw poll on if we're interested in this, and then Mary Ann, I guess we'll have to figure out the best way to, to do it.
Well, I have a couple of things. One is since, I, I would have to draft the license agreement unless you guys have one. So your client would have to reimburse the village for the fees.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I assume that she'll agree to that, I mean...
Yeah, you go and find out, because ordinarily that...
It cannot be the purchase of properties.
If we, if we, if we do it...
Oh, right, yeah, that's okay, that's okay.
And if she hires Lena or someone to do it, that's fine, and then you guys can look at...
It's still got to be reviewed, yeah, yeah. Because I was figuring it would be covered, if you're before the planning board, it would be get covered by, you know, the regular, uh, fees. The professional fees, but this is a little bit odd, so you have to get a few minutes...
I think it would probably still be helpful to have the one that you, the other one that you did, in terms of direct.
Yeah, right. And then once, I don't know if that one required insurance, that, that their insurance, and the village is an additional insurance, you probably have to do that. I mentioned that because what, it's sometimes problematic for the property owners, I don't know why, but I remember there's a case in Hastings where it never happened because she wouldn't get her insurance company to...
How much could the additional insurance cost?
I, I don't know what the issue was, but hers was a little bit more problematic because actually the house was over the property.
Oops. So, I mean, to start the straw poll, I mean, I'm willing to go forward with, you know, Mary Ann's review and, and recommendations and assuming that the client agrees, so here with me.
No, I'd, I'd like to see it, any, any additional improvement she wants to do and fund on that quarter would be fine, if she wants to throw something in. A bench, um, yeah, like something...
I'm not in a position of much leverage, but she did ask, you know, when is the village going to get around to fixing that sidewalk? I said that out loud. I said maybe this wasn't the time to talk about it, but...
Is the sidewalk village responsibility to keep in...
Yes, the repairs of sidewalks, we still maintain that.
This, the, the project does include new sidewalk in the area of the work, because there's no way to do the work without doing a sidewalk. So I don't know if that would have to be addressed in the life, I mean, the, the improvements are into the right of way, but this sidewalk, I guess, would be us doing the work and it's the village.
It would have to do with the street opening, right? I would think the sidewalk.
Because that's part of their project, so it's not...
Yeah, it doesn't like to be a license agreement. The license agreement is just for that house's property that in, in...
To the ramp and the stair.
Yeah, but to do, to do the work, I mean, a street opening, is that, I think a street opening is how it would work, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, no, we're happy to have you repair the sidewalk there.
That's like, it's a...
And we still want a bench.
I just feel like a bench, right?
Repair the sidewalk where, where we're doing the work, not down to the corner.
I didn't say that.
From, from Broadway down to the...
You just feel bad about stopping, you know?
Very, very electric, lots of water.
Yeah.
Now you're getting interested.
It might be televised, or else, and we may see this.
That completely is. But is there a precedent on Main Street where we've got ramps? How, how does that work in terms of liabilities and legalities? The ramps that are serving the commercial spaces and the retail spaces on Main Street, that, those...
Some of those might be on a profit, and some of them might be on property.
They're in the back, or they're...
There's one, uh, the Apple Store.
Dr. Mack?
Dr. Mack, just one there.
But is this...
It's been there a long time.
That's, that's required or something, and then, then not being able to do it since, you know, in a public...
I did tell the client that if they don't agree to do it, then maybe you won't have to do it.
So you're disappointed in our...
No, 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 it's the right thing, it's the right...
I mean, making it accessible is the right thing.
I mean, it, I know this sounds, I mean, to the great interests of the village, I could say that, you know, getting that, the facade fixed up, getting the cornice fixed up, this would be a great community benefit. So, I mean, they're definitely planning to do that, that's not just a piece that can be thrown overboard.
Well, I think she's, she is driven very much by budget, so what you'll see, what is being proposed is all the work associated with getting a better tenant in that lower space. So it's only the first phase, the window job is the first level, with the understanding that there'll be future phases. It's hard for us to get her to commit to the rest of the job, but you've seen that the main is level in that building, like, for her to commit to anything, I think is a better condition than...
The repair of the cornice is included in the package, in the submittal package that we're giving for a building permit. And it'll, it'll be bid out and everything, so it is a part of the work.
The windows are only the lower level.
The windows just the lower level, there's no guarantee yet for budget purposes that she won't decide to do something. But I, I think the, the cornice is going to be very important to her as well, because she does want to upgrade the building and bring in the higher revenue.
Are the windows changing?
Yeah, well, the windows are replacement windows, they're, they're like vinyl junk windows, so the original windows of the building have already ended up in the dumpster.
But are they the same size?
They're, yes, they're better than what's there now, they're back to the full brick opening, so...
Alteration.
The new ones?
Yeah.
It is an alteration.
Alteration, meaning?
An ARB.
It's ARB, oh, it is going to be...
ARB. ARB.
I don't understand, I don't understand.
Okay. All right.
What is she saying?
We're limited to a...
Let's just look around, we can't even talk about that.
You're getting the, the public right of way.
Go somewhere we don't want to go.
Will the ramp be made out of, what, what will the material?
It's just, it's just a concrete ramp.
Just a, okay.
The front steps are blue stone and brick.
Okay, but the side on the other end will be concrete. The plan is to be a concrete, and it's just wide, just the required width?
The minimum width and... Metal pipe rail, you know, like just...
That's prescribed by COOP. Very good.
Right.
Did you take the straw man pole?
We, we are ready, so I need you guys. Wait, wait, I moved my fist out, but I, I didn't hear a lot of projections of the table.
Art, did you say straw man pole?
Don't be too big against it.
This is how you can...
Straw man?
Straw pole.
That's a straw man pole, it's something else.
A long walk home, I know. Don't get lost.
Um, now I'm getting to understand what you're pointing, I'm sorry, it took me a while.
Thank you, guys. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Before you do that. I, oh, yeah, Mr. Lane.
Yeah, we did, just to, sorry, by that.
I'm going to test these out.
I withdraw my motion.
You're overran.
I'm excited.
This one take long.
See, you had done the straw man pole.
Want you to pass the map?
There's the update.
Yeah, it's an update, and what includes is the proposal from the fire department.
You were two different things?
No. No. It's the latest, um, kind of recap of where we are in terms of the tax cap. So what I've gathered here is old information from the fire department, includes that. Joe Archino sent earlier this week some proposals on recreation budget that impacted revenue and expenditures, that's factored in already. And anything we reviewed in the police and DPW budgets, those are in. Additionally, Larry and I had opportunity to review revenues, and we've increased some of them there. I think the total increase in revenues excluding the recreation part is about twenty-three thousand. It included some decreases to some lines that we felt were not achievable next year, as well as some increases in other areas such as mortgage tax. And we've had a very strong payment, they were the strongest ones since two thousand and six. There is some feeling that it will continue. I can't make that projection exactly, but we definitely have reflected the increase in our budgets next year. So that being said, with the increase in revenues and everything else factored in, it's giving us, we would be over the total available cap by ten thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. I want to back up and say that the total allowance was two hundred and sixty-one thousand. So that's if we use the entire allowance, we talked about that last time, the different components of the calculation of the allowance. And we talked about perhaps the ideology of not using it in one year, maybe in two years, they checked, and we can carry over any unused amount. So that's really trying to put everything, our arms around the whole picture, it's where we are with the tax cap, if we use it entirely, and all the proposals that we currently have in the budget.
Sorry, now, we, we still be, even if we use all of the prior carry for over by...
Ten, ten thousand.
The last time we looked at it, we were over like twenty-four thousand?
Yeah, so we have increases in revenues, we've had some, we, you know, cut our gas a bit, we've had some other cuts and, and increases as well. We had an increase, the police asked for some kind of monitoring system, the ten thousand, we, we, we put that in. There are a couple of areas that we're still waiting information, I'll have a workers' comp estimate, I've asked police to get it early this year. The actuary is there, underwriting is looking at it, they promised it by the fifteenth. I don't know what to expect, I was hoping that our experience level would go down, but I've gotten some additional settlements. I don't know how they're factored into the experience, don't have any information on the increase. Workers' comp, they only have their annual meetings sometime later, like in March, end of March, that's what we always get surprised. We're adopting the budget, we get an increase, but I've, you know, really went directly to underwriting and said I really need something earlier. The other one would be certiaries, we're expecting some settlements. Ed Lammers will have some settlements for us, he indicated very shortly, so we'll see how those settlements compare to what we have budgeted for next year to see if there's any movement on that. So those are the two major moving pieces, would be workers' comp and the certs. So that's really, I don't know if I left anything out, Larry, on the big picture of things here.
No, we just wanted to get you the big picture, so you understood.
Where we were at.
Where were, what was the, this is a projected two point five percent rate?
Two point oh two.
Oh, what are we looking at? Oh, sixteen, oh, we're doing sixteen, seventeen, I don't know, whatever.
We're in the future.
Move it on.
Two oh two, where were we before? I probably have it in my book.
My books are all, so I can't tell.
Two dot one six. That was a levy increase.
So we should throw away these old pages, or...
Well, you put, I, I put S three, like superseded, I just put a squiggle sometimes, you know, that it's...
But you asked me to add here.
Yeah.
We kind of have our whole bunch to do that.
So you're saying... Yeah, but this needs a, this needs holes in it, I guess.
So in terms of other areas, I guess I have a couple of questions, Larry, I'd like to just sit down and talk to you about, and then get your take on it, before I go into any great detail with everyone else, just to do a Saturday check first. Anytime? Just not Friday?
I'm on the techs.
Hello?
My, my father's eighty birthday. Just for the record, it'll be seventy-nine on Friday and seventy-six on Saturday. That's not how old he is, it's just... It's not changing, because he's... Yeah, we're going to be negative five, so, but no, but next week, or, or even tomorrow. Anytime tomorrow? Yeah, just not nine o'clock, because I have a meeting. Later, and, and that's all I have for the day, so, and then I'm here, actually, my flight doesn't leave until nine o'clock tomorrow night.
Some of your weather and...
So you want to do eleven or one?
Eleven, sure. Make it adjourned. Well, maybe I'll want to. I'm making a motion to adjourn, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
She carries three...